Call the meeting to order and we'll do the Pledge of Allegiance.
Pledge of Allegiance.
To the flag of the United States of America and to the Republic for which it stands, one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
All right. Let's take a roll call. Foster?
Here.
Needham Meyer?
Here.
Niner?
Here.
Buzz Looper?
Here.
And stump is absent. Yes, stump is absent. Okay. Can I get a motion for an approval of the previous meeting minutes?
I make a motion to approve the meeting minutes from, what's the date? April, is it April?
April 27.
April 27, I just had it written.
Yeah.
I make a motion to approve the minutes without a reading from our last meeting on April 22nd, 2025.
Support.
All right, um, all in favor?
Aye.
Aye. Uh, any, I didn't hear any noes or I heard everybody say yes, so. Uh, on to the next. We can do the nomination of officers as we currently had a bit of a shift, uh, change in our staffing, for lack of better word. Um. Anyone would like to nominate for a chair?
I nominate you for our chair.
All right, I will accept. Any discussion, any?
I nominate Freddie as your second.
And we have to do one.
We have to do those in order.
Okay.
One at a time. All right, um, I think we have to do roll call for that one.
We do.
Oh, and did I, where, did you second that Marilyn? Or did anyone second that?
Support, I support.
Support, okay. Just want to make sure I'm hearing things.
You both nominated at the same time if that counts.
Okay, appreciate it.
Did we?
Yeah.
Foster?
Yes.
Needham Meyer?
Yes.
Niner?
Yes.
Buzz Looper?
Yes.
All right, now you can make your second.
Okay, now, I make Freddie the second for the chair.
Vice chair?
Your vice chair, yes.
Accept.
I'll second.
Thank you.
All right, I'm going to need a roll call vote for that. Foster?
Yes.
Needham Meyer?
Yes.
Niner?
Yes.
Buzz Looper?
Yes.
All right, I believe that leaves our secretary position open? Or with the treasurer, or with the treasurer?
We did secretary, we never filled the treasurer spot.
Okay, I don't think we have a treasurer. Okay. Does anyone, do you, does anyone want to be nominated for secretary?
No.
I've got two noes. We can leave it open for now.
Yep.
Is that, is that coshare Jim, if we leave that position open? Okay.
Yep.
Okay, then I will move on to reports. We do not have any reports. We also don't have any old business to discuss. So at this time, I will request that someone make a motion to close the regular planning meeting and a motion be made for opening the public hearing.
I'll make a motion to close the current hearing and open up public hearing.
I second. All right. Uh, we'll take a roll call vote on that. Foster?
Yes.
Niner?
Yes.
Needham Meyer?
Yes.
Buzz Looper?
Yes.
All right, so as of 6:04 PM, we are closing our, our normal planning meeting and opening the public hearing for the master plan. All right, so at this time, I will open up the floor to community input. Um, there is a three-minute time limit for anyone who would like to speak, and this is about the master plan. There will be another public comment section later for, um, other topics, I believe. Yes.
Well, I'll start, Jim Gardner, Luna Pier, Michigan. Thank you, everyone, for all the work you put into this, and I really want to thank the previous planning commission members who put a lot of work into this. This is enough to really burn people out. Uh, you guys stayed with it, and it's a lot of work, and you had a lot on your table. I really appreciate all of your work and your commitment to this. I think it's a, it's a very good master plan, I'm excited about it. Take us in a direction for the next five years. Uh, made progress. Maybe do some zoning changes based on our ma- master plan, uh, which is in the works. And we're working on a grant for affordable housing based on this ma- master plan. So I'm looking forward to bringing this to fruition, and I think we have a very good document here. Thanks.
Thank you.
Thank you.
Connie Cole, 10644 Lakeside Drive. Um, again, I want to thank all of you for your participation. I know all of the boards here in town, um, we all kind of struggle with finding enough people to participate and get things done, and we have very few resources to get a lot of things done with. So appreciate your time and your efforts as well. Um, I think you may have seen some correspondence I had as well that said, I think as a city, we really need to try and figure out how we take all of our boards and our city council and set some priorities, because I think there's times that we have the things that maybe overlap between some of the boards or some of the committees, and because we have so much that we need to accomplish, that maybe we should try and assign more of those, maybe specific priorities to each of those boards, rather than, there's so much to be done, that maybe we need some short-term goals. And then, looking at the implementation plan that's in the master plan, I mean, there's a lot of stuff in there, but, um, I think there should be more focus on that, and I think I'll also go to city council meeting and suggest the same thing there, because it seems like we just need more focus on priorities to get things done with so few resources. Thank you.
Thank you.
Hello, hello Planning Commission and everybody in the audience. This page on.
Can you state your name and job city for the record?
I'm sorry.
That's okay.
Michael Lucarelli, 4642 Allen Cove Road, Luna Pier, Michigan. On, on this page of the plant, uh, master plan, um, it kind of shows like the core downtown area.
Could you state?
It's page 49, page 49.
Okay, thank you, thanks.
Sorry.
We'll follow along.
Um, and I don't know whether it's appropriate to bring this up now, or, as you said, later in the meeting.
Um, if it's about the master plan, now is a good time.
It, I would say it is, but it has to do with that section right there. I wanted you to take a look at this traffic flow pattern. If you look at this, um, core area downtown, there's basically two options as it relates to the master plan and what this property could consist of. One would be more pedestrian-friendly, non-motorized vehicle-friendly, and green space-friendly. The other one would be more auto-intensive, uh, more parking-intensive. So I want you to look at Northern Avenue, considering it open. Uh, the gray area, we just bought that house, so between Jack and I, we own pretty much both sides of Northern Avenue. So imagine, um, with no, uh, with the street open, a car circling and circling, looking for a parking space, going down Northern, going down Elm Street, going down Lakeside Drive, going down Luna Pier Road, turning back again on Northern. They think a car might be pulling out, let's go back this way. So if that's going to be the case, then you might want to include it on your master plan. The yard, we were going to convert that to a parking lot and, and make a huge overhead deck to accommodate all the cars circling and circling and circling. Is that eventually what's going to happen, because there's going to be five new businesses opened with nowhere to park, five brand-new businesses on that little square block? So the cars will be circling and looking. Now, let's say that they decide to close the street with Resolution 896, which was a trade for the sidewalk and, and the street, that was an actual trade. Um, then there would be no liquor over there, but the city would have to, in my opinion, provide a liquor license with the parking lot, we would do the parking lot. Um, if the street was closed, we would be keeping more green space, only people, only walkability, only, because we, we don't really actually want the cars circling and circling, but that's basically what's going to happen when you open five new businesses on one side of Northern and another four on the other side of Northern that already exist, or two are, two are closed. Um, so it becomes more of an auto, auto-type downtown versus a pedestrian downtown. So I want you to think about that for the master plan. Either way, you tell me, as a city, or a city council probably should, should make the determination, do they want more auto or more pedestrian and green space?
So the master plan is, is based on what the community has communicated that they would like to see in this area. Um, it's, it is just a plan, I don't, it's not, how to say this?
It's not written, it's not a change of zoning.
Yes, it's not a change in zoning.
Yeah, not, not yet, yeah, the, um.
Even when it's approved, it's not a change in zoning.
Correct. The, the, um, attorney told me, once it's approved, you, you simply apply to, to get your zoning to match the master plan.
Yes.
Exactly, yeah, we understand that.
No, it's a good, a good.
Yeah, I'm just trying to get a feel for, for the planning, because the next step, I'm just going to submit all the backup to city council for the June meeting, because it's delaying me. Uh, I've got engineers coming in doing drawings, and we don't know whether to draw a parking lot or an open green space. So when city council says yes, I like the green space idea versus the auto idea, then we'll go that way. Otherwise, we'll have them draw the parking lot and the, and the big rooftop deck.
I see.
Yeah.
Yeah.
So there's got to be a determination one way or another, on that part of it.
We only make suggestions to city council, they're the ones with the final authority.
Okay, yeah, that's why I say, I want to give you a heads up, I'm going to, I'm going to give city council all the backup information and, and get their take on it, because again, it's holding me up and it's holding the city up, because everybody's waffling back and forth, where they say, you know, the, the trade's a deal, now they're saying maybe not, maybe it is, maybe it isn't. Now they're saying they don't want a parking lot there, uh, they like the green space, but, you know, again, cars are going to be looking for a place to park. So, okay.
Let's hope we have that problem, Michael.
Huh?
Let's hope we have that problem.
Yeah, and, and again, if we do, again, with, if we keep it more auto-intensive, intensive, uh, I'd be happy to put a parking space there. Thank you.
Thank you. Any other comments? Floor is open. All right, hearing none. I will, at this time, close the community, uh, input. And, um, at this time, we will need another motion to close the public hearing and reopen our regular meeting.
I'll make a motion to close our public hearing and reopen our regular meeting?
Support.
All right, uh, we'll need roll call again on this one?
Mm-hmm.
Foster?
Yes.
Needham Meyer?
Yes.
Niner?
Yes.
Buzz Looper?
Yes.
All right, motion passes. Uh, so at 6:13 PM, we are closing the public hearing and reopening the regularly, uh, the regular planning commission meeting. So, now that we have reopened that meeting, we're on to new business. Um, we have before us a, we need to schedule a public hearing for the home occupation of residence 4416 Luna Pier Road Parcel 5851-030-004-00. We do not need to, to, uh, vote on it at this time, we can take time to consider it. If, if it needs a, a public hearing or if it doesn't.
If it needs a public hearing, I'm all for it, let's get it moved, I didn't have any reason to deny it. So are we voting to have a public hearing?
We haven't made a motion yet.
We haven't made a motion.
I thought that's what you just did.
No, no, I don't, the chair doesn't make motions, chair.
Not you.
Yeah, okay.
Okay, I make a motion to.
Do we want to discuss, or?
Oh, I'm sorry.
Discuss what it is before we make any motions?
Yeah, let's find out where it is.
Yeah, that, because I think that just came on our desk, and I, it's. Right, it's a new one, though. I believe this one ju- um, is different from the ones you submitted in the past. If you want to confirm that.
Okay, yeah, it, it's temporary, just for a couple months, as we wait for the health department for the engineers to do drawings. Um, so my daughter and son-in-law and a friend are opening, kind of like a garage sale in the screened-in porch area.
Why don't, since we're still recording, how about you come to the mic? Sorry. Normally, you're fine.
The, the past two or three years, you might have saw, um, my daughter Sophie and Sean Miller and out there, you know, selling beach toys and stuff out with a tent at one point. Last year, they, they moved it into the screened-in porch. Um, technically, Jack's address is 4416 Lakeside. Technically, it's still residential, technically, Jack could have a garage sale, but we, but we approached the city and the building inspector to say, you know, are there specific things you would like us to do on behalf of the city versus, you know, the te- the temporary garage sale while we wait our, uh, development paperwork to go through? Um, and, and they said to fill this out and, and come to you. Uh, but it won't be even at the public hearing till, till the end of, uh, Jul- uh, June, June 24th, I think. Um, so I basically told the kids, and, and I told the city, if you have to arrest me, arrest me, I hate to say it, say it that way, but, you know, he's going to have a garage sale temporarily until this gets through, you know, planning to, but, but basically, I, I think the bigger picture is it, it's a beach shop. Whether, whether it be where the shop is next to Pretty Boy Floyd's, which is going to be there next year, um, or whether it's temporarily by the screened-in porch, it's, it's selling, you know, souvenirs and beach, beach stuff.
Right.
Basically, that's all it is.
So are you, are you running a business out of this house, or are you?
They're holding garage sales.
Full-time garage sales and business?
Yeah, I'm not doing it. Jack is, he's, he lives there.
But this is your request?
Yeah, I'm, I'm filling it out because I own the property, true, and, and they asked me to fill it out, I'm old. But, but Jack's driver's license says 4416 Lakeside, and he's been there for several years. So it's really just temporary, uh, Mr. Needham, until you do the city stuff, you know, red, red stuff, I guess they call it.
So next question is, are you, you're looking for home occupancy, or are you running a business out of there?
Yeah.
Because you, you own a business license to continue running a garage sale, my understanding, is that correct?
Um, I think Sean Miller checked with the attorney, I don't think we need a business license for a garage sale, but, but, um, again, it's temporary, probably just during June, until this gets through this.
Running a business for a month is not a temporary, it's, that's running a business.
A vendor's license?
Yeah.
Yeah, I asked for that, I asked for that, and, and, yeah, I asked for that, and he said, do this. I asked for a vendor's license.
Is this, question to Jim, is this similar to what we see when the fireworks folk come in? Is this the same application form that we get?
No, this is totally different.
Okay.
What?
Because that's what I was expecting to see, with something kind of like this.
It was residential and it got changed to downtown mixed use? So if you change the usage, then you have to submit a site plan, and it has to go before planning, which a change of use to commercial would fit that definition.
So this is igniscible, then, what he is trying to do?
If you want, it's, it's kind of like, it, it, it's kind of, I'm talking about Mike Densky. He explains it, that you're, you're changing the use to commercial, but you're trying to go back and play the residential side of it? And when do you?
Yeah, I'm, as soon as, as soon, good question, Jim. Uh, as soon as city council approves the site plan, or planning commission does, then we switch it to commercial. But right now, it's still residential, because they haven't really approved anything.
It's, I.
They haven't approved, like, the street, they haven't approved, uh, the site plan. It's still been residential, because they haven't really approved anything yet. They haven't really, I've submitted it, but, but for the past, I guess, year and a half, but they haven't really said yes, move forward.
So the parcel is zoned downtown mixed, but the house itself is residential, is that where the?
Well, what happened is, I don't know how long you all lived here, there was a, a gentleman that lived there for about 50 or 60 years, it was his house. And, and so technically, we could make it a house again at this point, because we haven't really got any approvals for any kind of development work or anything, even in our presentations. So, um, we're kind of holding that until we get the approval, then we'll switch it.
Okay.
Because it's grandfathered in residential, but it's zoned commercial, downtown mixed use.
So back to what, um, Mr. Needham Meyer said, if it stays residential right now, and you want to do garage sales for the next four to six weeks, let's say.
Correct.
Is the, does the city require a yacht sale permit?
No.
Not for just weekend use, but this is continuous.
Is it season?
Which is basically running a business.
No, no, I'm just trying to bring that process.
Once the planning or city or public, once you convert it to commercial, then we'll do that, but right now, you haven't said yes, so it's still residential.
This, what I'm seeing in front of me doesn't look like it's an application to change the zone from, from anything to anything, it's just looking for permission to sell.
Correct.
During the summer. And that's very confusing to me, because I, I was expecting it to look more like what I mentioned to the mayor, that, uh, occasionally, we see the permits to sell, like, fireworks in the plaza. And I, that's.
And this is different.
Yeah, I'm trying to make sure that this isn't something.
Well, yeah, we asked for a vendor's license, I don't know, maybe they don't have a vendor's license here. Maybe that's why we did this.
Yeah, and I, I understand that this is what you were told, or, um, is what we have on our desk. Um.
Yes.
It's just, I don't, I don't know if this applies for a temporary circumstance, I don't.
Would conflict with his other requests to change this, you know, to make mixed use up and down that whole street, so now he's got two requests.
And none have been approved, so I guess we'll see what happens.
Mayor's got a comment?
I, I need to clarify my answer.
Yes.
I misunderstood a little bit, if you're talking like fireworks sales at the plaza?
Yeah.
Yes, very much the same.
Okay.
That was a change, a temporary change in use, and that had to go before the planning commission.
Right.
And that was a site plan submitted in a commercial, or, you know, in a retail district.
So do.
I think it's art, uh, it's B2 is what it's zoned, but same, kind of same thing. Where it's a business, but because it's commercial property and it's zoned that way, you have to submit before the planning commission. This, if you're going to grandfather residential, then this isn't allowed, if you're going to go.
As a garage sale, it would be, though.
It's, uh, that's.
With that, okay, let me ask a question.
That's what the attorney told us.
So i- is it a straight-through, like, every day of the week, or is it just a weekend?
It's up to them. Um, we, we think that Memorial Day through Labor Day is your prime season, so to be closed, you know, while pending public hearings and, and things like that, probably doesn't really bode well for, for, for the public or, or for, for the people. And the young adults holding the garage sale.
What's on the books right now, if somebody wanted to do a yacht, a literal yacht sale in their garage down on?
12th Street.
12th Street. Is there, it, how long could they do that before, can they do that? And is, because I, I guess I'm seeing it as the same, if he owns the house, not saying I'm far against it, but if he owns the property and someone else down the street wants to do a similar situation, how, what would happen if they didn't come before us and get permission? Is there anything on the books, does anybody know?
You should have a vendor license to sell every weekend or every day.
Okay.
Running a business out of your house.
We asked for that.
To sell to the public.
Yeah, we, we did ask.
Well, is it sure, do we have that?
Yeah.
Do we have that, mayor?
I asked for that, when I went to the city hall.
We, we do not have a garage sale permit.
What about vendor? No, a vendor.
A vendor permit, we do, let's, this doesn't really fit that category. We don't have anything that addresses it, we can do that, and we should, for, like, food trucks and things like that. This is more of a zoning issue. Is it commercial?
Well, that's just a garage sale, though, of his house every day.
That's, I mean.
I don't.
Again, my question.
You wouldn't decide, but.
Right, but.
It sure sound, it, it may sound like a commercial use, I'm not going to answer.
It, it does, but I want, what, my question was, is, um, if we, in a, not saying we are, but if, if we said no to Mr. Lucarelli, but someone down on 12th Street is doing it.
Had a week-long estate, had a week-long estate sale or something, like people do all the time.
Is there anything that says no more than 14 days, no more than whatever? How frequently can it, can they occur?
There, there is nothing in our law that says you, that, that says you have to have a permit or for that. Zoning is exclusionary, means, it's not addressed, that means you're not allowed to do it.
Okay, so there's no ordinance that says he can't have a month-long garage sale?
There's no ordinance that says he can.
That he can.
That's the real question, because it's, because zoning is exclusionary, you have, it has to be allowed for your, before you can do it.
If some.
We've never enforced it for a one-day or two-day garage sale.
Right.
We would have the authority to do that if we, if we chose. But if, because it's a change of usage, and if somebody did it every day, and, and they were, then you would probably want to say no less than. That's the subjective question, is it business? Is it a con- commercial use? That's, that's the question.
She's selling what, just like floaties and chairs and stuff?
You've seen them out there the last two or three years.
Yeah.
Yeah, it's temporary in that shop, they're going to open a full-fledged business once, uh, the city and planning approve the business concept's down there, and that'll go in next to Pretty Boys.
Yeah.
But it's just kind of a, a one-month, kind of like, just a hang-your-hat sort of thing.
Right, I know.
Until you guys start.
It's like sunglasses and beach toys and stuff like that. I guess I'm, I guess I'm confused, and I need to keep tabling things, because that just. Well, it's, it puts them in the rear. Somebody's been doing it for a couple years. So, and now he's just basically putting it in front of us because of the zoning purposes, is that correct?
They were planning on doing this, but as a courtesy or precaution, we went to the city asking, do we, can we get a vendor's license, or should we just keep it a garage sale until we get, you know, the development done? And, and then Mike Densky did some digging to find out that I wasn't technically living there, but my son Jack is.
Right.
So that makes it, we could do the garage sale, or he could do it.
But there is a body living in there?
Yes, there is. He's lived there for years, yeah. Well, the exact same address, yes.
So, but we don't have anything from, from Mr. Densky, right, supporting that? That, did he sign, that it was, I keep going out, but did he sign off? No.
Uh, he said that it was, uh, considered, because what, I incorrectly said that I'm not living there, which I'm not, my son is.
Right.
He said, well, you got to go to a climate, so, because you, because it's probably a non-occupied home or something of that nature, but in reality, he is, he's living there.
I'm looking for something in writing from Mr. Densky saying we're okay.
Yeah, his writing, he, he, I can get you the email, he sent me, he said he couldn't do it because I wasn't occupying the home, so I responded saying, but yes, but my son Jack is, and I sent him a copy of his driver's license, showing the address. So, you know, basically, he's going to hold it. That's, that's, I'm sorry, I forgot, then I went and talked to him the next day about it.
Well, personally, I just feel like I, I need, we need something from, from Mike to tell us that we're going in the right of one direction. I don't, I don't know this.
Yeah, I'm, I, this is, this is a new one. Um, I have a question as well, this would, for a few questions. This would only be the outside of the premise, not the inside of the building?
Um, we shut it down last year because we had to, uh, spend $12,000 on an ADA-compliant ramp to get in, which we did, so that's why, uh, we went forward this year, because we had that in place. So yes, it would be only in the screened-in porch and outside where it's fenced in, so it would be contained with a fence and a porch.
Okay, um, and I noticed that you don't have specific dates in this request.
Um, they want to start Toronto.
I understand that, but we don't have an end date.
Uh, the end date would be once planned, the public hearing, um, I, I've already told Mr. Densky and Jim, that once that is approved, we'd be happy to switch from garage sale to whatever, you know, the planning says, you know, for the temporary use for the couple months it was in there. you know, for the temporary use for the couple of months it was in there.
Okay. Um.
Make a motion to table this until we have some clarification from Mr. Densky and what is required in regards to running a business out of this business district.
Second. All right, I'll need a roll call vote. Foster?
Yes.
Nita Meyer?
Yes.
Niner?
Yes.
Buzz Lufer?
Yes.
When is our next meeting?
Our next meeting is at the end of June.
Basically, I'm not, I need to say, I'm not going to waste the whole summer. This is prime time, June, July, and August.
We understand. We also want to make sure that we are doing due process as well. We've been caught off guard before.
And for your safety as well.
Yes.
Yeah, absolutely.
Mm-hmm. Okay, um, community input. This is now the time, if you wanted to make, mention anything not related to the zone, master plan, but I guess if you wanted to, if you had something that came up in your mind, did you want to add? Now is the time.
I'll comment on the application for the zoning. I heard, I believe, Mr. Lucarelli say that he wants to change this to commercial use, but he's not waiting. And when I look at the date of this application, it's 5/23/25, May 23rd, just four days ago. Today's 5/27. That's, whose fault is that? If you want to do a commercial and convert this property for commercial use, but you didn't submit it until four days or so before you wanted it, wanted that use, there's a lot of work that has to be done to make sure this is safe for the public to come in. When it's a commercial property and you're inviting the public in, the standards are totally different than what you have on your house, residential. So you kind of, I hear both sides of this to where you want to open it up and kind of admitted that in the statements, but don't want to wait for any of the checks and balances. That's just my opinion on this.
Thank you.
Mr. Densky did approve.
At this time, it's public comment. If you're going to address, please come up here.
Mike Lucarelli, Alan Cove wrote, "Mr. Densky did close and approve the permit for the porch, as well as the ADA compliant entry, so it is safe for public. It's been closed, that permit, and, and checked off to good, in good standing. So that's why, from a residential standpoint, um, that's not a problem. Not a problem at all. Um, from a commercial standpoint, again, I'm submitting the paperwork as a beach shop. There's no, uh, you know, hazard, so, so to speak, as there would be on a normal, you know, garage sale kind of, kind of a residential thing. But that has definitely been approved by Mr. Densky."
Thank you. Any other public input? All right. Um, now I will close community input and work on planning action needed. Um, I guess we already hopped for that. Sorry, we did that out of order, um, to table it. I guess we didn't need a vote to, for the motion, so we're done with that one. I have a process question. Um, I'm seeing here that in my agenda that there was one about, uh, oh, never mind, I do know what this one is. Okay, so this is, it probably should have been brought up with old, uh, business, but we need, um, city council sent back our, the change of zoning ordinance for bar, to permit bars, microbreweries, cocktail lounges in the DM as a by-right use. They would like us to, um, take action on that. And I am also missing the master plan. Is this correct?
The master plan is, um, 12A, motion to accept or deny?
I have a different one than you do. Let me open up my digital version. My apologies.
It's okay. New people all around.
All right. Okay, I'm going to have to bring up my phone.
What, do you want mine? This is just what Ian Bridges sent out. That's the agenda.
Yeah, that's what I'm trying to open and find how it is not letting me.
Mm-hmm.
That's interesting. Okay, we do not need to, you can ignore what I just said about the, the change of zoning. They did send it backwards, but I believe we needed some input from our legal first. And that's what it was waiting on before. It should have arrived on, on my agenda. Okay.
Probably should follow that.
Definitely. All right, so we will save that until after the, uh, master plan. Okay. So the only thing on planning action needed is, um, well, now we're on to the master plan. So we'll need either a motion to accept or deny the master plan. Before we do that, there was an email from, uh, from Neil Wakeman and Connie as well. Connie's had been around. Um, did everyone have a chance to read that one?
I read Connie's.
All right, Connie, I have not read Neil's yet.
Okay. So, um, I guess I will read it so that we have had it read. All right, so Neil Wakeman, Councilor Wakeman, sent us an email earlier today, um, thanking everyone for , uh, working on the master plan, and I'll just read what he is suggesting. Okay, so performance zoning enforcement. Performance zoning is discussed as a tool to limit impacts like noise or pollution. Will the city have a capacity to effectively enforce such regulations? Uh, blight enforcement. Uh, though appropriately defined via local ordinance over a master plan, residents have consistently identified blight as a top issue. Can we strengthen the master plan's language to recommend not only incentive programs, but also zoning code enforcement upgrades to follow? Um, and he has suggested that this go through the city lawyer for verification before it does. Um, I don't want to sit here, we'll be all here all night if I do read this whole thing. Um, he's given some suggestions for adding to that. And then recognizing existing concerns, several public comments referenced operations like dynamic transport. Zoning amendments clearly clear, recently clarified may help, but no guarantees during ongoing negotiations. Future land use and map former power plant site, page 69 plus. Um, setback language as slash where appropriate, if not already present.
Well, again, this, this is a plan.
It is a plan.
Do we get that specific in the plan? Isn't that when you go for the zoning, the ordinances?
I believe that would be the more appropriate place to put those. And I see the mayor is nodding his head in agreement. Any concerns over here? I know I haven't turned my head over here to check on you, Freddie.
I'm fine. I can speak up.
I know you can. Um.
Connie had some good, very good things in her e- email too.
Okay.
As well. Um, but I felt like they would come, they were more like she mentioned, you know.
I know there was a graphic that was suggested to be recolored. That's a minor change. Was there anything major?
Was there anything? There was a lot of talk in, I agree with you, about the, we should be meeting at least twice a year, all the committees doing something to communicate. So, but we don't need that in the.
I think to me, it's more a matter of how do we make sure this master plan moves forward and that there's action on it. So it's more a matter of, um, there's an implementation plan in there. Is that maybe up for review or maybe, um, you know, just some work to be done around the implementation part of it?
Okay.
I don't think the plan says you have to do that exact implementation plan, but, um.
This has been waiting in the wings for so long.
Yeah.
And I have to be honest, so many people, it's been sent out, it's been posted, all of those things. But it seems like these concerns seem to be implementation that I think is part of that afterwards, and a commitment from the committees versus, again, it's a plan. Um.
Yeah, I'm just trying to make sure that if there's any.
No, I agree.
Any disagreements, any revisions to text, language, anything major, that that is addressed now before it goes to council for adoption.
And that is a week from Thursday?
Yes.
Would that hit the next one?
12th, June 12th. I'd have to.
It's, it would be the first meeting, the first council meeting in June, correct?
June 12th.
That would be the 12th, yes.
So if we decided that we wanted to add something to it tonight?
It would not make that meeting.
It would not make that meeting.
Yes.
It would depend on the nature of the change. So if there's just some minor things, we could turn that around by the end of the week and send it back.
Okay.
Okay.
Or adding a sentence that maybe adopts what Connie was saying about.
Sure, yeah, if, if there are minor things, you know, we've got the document already, it wouldn't be, I have a.
But then we have to give it to city council. Um, they've had it, but it's just a reminder that this, we should be voting on it, um, on the 12th. Like tabling and tabling and tabling.
I, yeah. I would hate to see this held up for anything at this point. It's been around. But unless there's, if somebody finds something major, I mean, that, then it would make sense, but.
Absolutely.
I, I don't believe.
Public comments going to be.
Again, it's a plan, so it's.
Yeah, so I, I guess, uh, my name's Lauren. I'm from McKenna. I'm covering for Hunter as he's out on, uh, paternity leave right now. Um, so I guess another direction we would want from this planning commission is the extent to which you would want, you know, the comments heard during the public comment period incorporated into the plan. Um, so that would be another thing to kind of address. Uh, I think you kind of covered, I haven't seen the, the comments from Neil that you mentioned. It sounds like they just came in.
Yeah.
Um, and I'm not sure if some of them are, you know, maybe addressed later on, or if it's, uh, you know, master plan specific. Um, but yeah, so once, you know, we'd be looking for a recommendation from planning commission to city council um, for the adoption, and you can do that recommendation with, um, recommended changes as well.
Okay.
And then after that, it goes to council for adoption, and, you know, hopefully they would, you know, take your recommendation as a planning advisory board who's worked very hard on this and, you know, adopt that.
I wouldn't mind seeing a, uh, probably if we could do it now, Connie, I would love, I would love to see something in the plan of implementation that the boards should meet, um.
So we, we have.
To cohesively drive this master plan.
Sure. So we, we do have some goals around planning and zoning, the first one being to review them, um, you know, regularly, on an annual basis.
Mm-hmm.
Um, we've got some things about trainings for the, uh, the planning commission, ZBA, things like that. We can certainly incorporate, you know, having joint meetings annually into that. That would be a, a fairly easy line item to add, if that's the direction that the commission would like.
Would it be annually, Connie, or semi? What did you think? I can't do it much more than twice a year.
Well, I think the master plan implementation could probably be annual. There's no reason why we couldn't say that we think the board should meet twice a year. Maybe not specifically around the master plan, but around how to generally prioritize.
I agree.
Yeah, that is a, also, you know, I, I'm not sure if you're familiar with the redevelopment-ready communities. Um, it's a program through the MEDC that, uh, allows communities to kind of tap into their grant funding. But one of their best practices for planning and zoning is actually having a joint session every year for the planning commission, the DDA board, and, uh, city council as well. So it would align with best practices as well.
And that would be easy to put in there?
Yeah, we can add, uh, we can add a, you know, s- 6.9, uh, goal 6.9, and that would be fairly straightforward.
Yeah, 6.1, or, or, Remy says reviewing master plan goals, objectives, and action plan annually. It doesn't say with whom.
Do we want to just?
Add to that sentence, maybe just say that any, however's easiest is if it can get back in a couple of days.
Sure, sure.
Or we can certainly let the, um, the council members know, right, that the changes, we're adding that. I don't think it's going to be a problem.
That will have to be mentioned in the motion. That will, that, whatever changes we want.
Editing.
Yeah.
And we, we can certainly provide a cover memo as well as what's changed from the 63-day review period one, so then it's really easy for, um, the council members to see.
Yeah. And I want to just note that I'm looking at the map, uh, Connie, that we were looking at on printout the other day, um, where the color was weird. It looks great on electronic, so I think it might have been the printer. But if you're still concerned about it, now is the time. We can suggest it. Was it?
On the future.
Yes, the future use map, and was it?
It was even a current one that isn't that very clear.
Right, I've got that one up right now though, and it's on my screen, which you probably can't see from here. It's, it's pretty clearly delineated in color to me, but, um, was it, it's the business in the downtown used mix, uh, mixed-use district that was not very clear on the printed-out version? There was definitely a color mismatch somewhere on there.
Page is it in?
It is page 69. Something was a peach color is what I put in my notes, but I don't have, I did not have the printout with me. Or at least the copy that we had last time.
I thought they adjusted that.
Okay.
When he was here before, he had circled them.
Yeah, we had looked at one the other day that was a little bit awkward, but it, it does look like.
It could have been an older one. These are new.
Okay.
Because I know it was addressed previously, but we were making changes to the.
Okay, I just wanted to make sure that.
That's sort of goldy?
No, no.
Because that's multifamily, downtown.
Now, there's like a blue and a purple that were close, and I know he was going to change something around with that and use that peach. Could have been orange.
I, I think.
Those are pretty distinguished now when you look at the map.
They look very distinguished, so it must have been an old copy we were looking at.
Okay.
All right, so no worries on that one. Um, so if I go back to Neil's email.
Oh, you know, that map though, where Harperside is, I don't know that that, where the senior center is, that's listed as single-family residential, and I'm not sure that that.
That is a good catch. So the senior center, which is over by the, well, the re, uh, behind the fire station-ish. I'm not great at describing where it is.
It's right by where that business uses. Do you see an orange?
Yeah, yeah. I was trying to give background for the here, uh, recording. Yeah, it probably should, would that count as multifamily residential then?
That would be a business.
Didn't we already have this?
It's a senior living?
Yeah, the senior living, living center.
I'm asking more.
Sorry. Um, yeah, we would probably, you know, it listed as multi, so we can make that change.
Okay.
Would be a multifamily home and not a business?
It's not.
If it's a senior living?
It'd be, yeah, we, we would typically classify it as multi, just because there are several units in one building. I know that sometimes for like assessing purposes, they classify like four units or more as a commercial thing, but the, the use of it is, is multifamily residential.
Okay.
And then just so I can confirm, is this, this one is?
Yeah, it should be like right there. Yeah.
Sounds, that's an easy change too as well.
There are a few little single-family homes in front of it, though, is the tricky part. So, uh, it's called Harperside assisted living, if you find where it is on Google Maps and then.
Okay. Yeah, another, I guess, consideration is if your zoning ordinance allows senior living facilities in. Okay, yeah, another, I guess, consideration is if your zoning ordinance allows senior living facilities in your residential district. It could, the future land use could stay single family, so that's another consideration.
I'd have to check that.
Or if you were gonna change it to do that.
Does the mayor know the answer to that? I, I, would, insurance is not allow that if, if it couldn't be single family.
I have the, the full zoning or, or it's printed, but that'll take me a second to flip it.
Shoney, Eddie.
I, I, as it, for the insurance alone, we can't do it as a single family home.
Okay, it sounds like it, the consensus is to update. Any, any input?
Yeah, we could probably still, if they can, if they said that they can update that quickly for us, we can still make the mo, if everything sounds good, we can still make the motion with the line item in six one in regards to the annual meeting, and then also the notation of the update from single to multifamily in the map.
So those two things.
Those two things inside the motion, that we can vote on that, if everything else sounds good, unless we have any other public voice on it, then we can put, we can bring that to council if approved. Of course, we'd have to have the final copy
Right.
for presentation at the meeting. But at least we make our notations and what we're looking to adjust.
You felt that you could get it back, today's Tuesday, I think by the end of the week?
Yeah, to clarify, when's your, when, do you know when the packet deadline for council is?
That's a question for Jim.
We usually have them out by, it would be June tenth. Is that maybe Tuesday?
So we're gonna do that next meeting.
So you roughly have two weeks.
That's, okay, that's a lot closer to, usually I see communities like fifteen days, something like that, so that's a lot less tight. But yeah, we can, we can definitely, those are really small items, we can definitely make those by the end of the week.
So we're going to add the community, the committee's all meeting at least twice a year, and then we're going to update the assisted living facility to a multifamily.
Was it twice a year or, or once a year?
Once.
Was it once?
Annual.
Okay.
Yeah, do annual meeting.
Annually? Just make a net, motion you. Go ahead.
Anything else that anyone wants to discuss about this? Well, it's not quite public here, it was to my commissioner.
I, I think with Mr. Wakeman's points, he's got some good points in there, but I think that could be addressed, like mentioned with zoning. Especially with the noise ordinance and the problems that we've had with dynamic and then exceeding the noise. So, and then of course the blight, we've addressed that, we're still waiting for a response on that. So there's some things in there, but again, of course, that, I think, I think it doesn't impede on what we have here with our master plan, because we've addressed some of those things previously.
Yeah, okay.
Sounds right.
All right.
So then we are ready to either make a motion to approve or deny the master plan, since the council.
I was joking with Mike, but was it something?
We're past public comment.
Yeah, we're.
So we're making a motion to approve with adding the committee meeting annually per year
Recommend approval.
and to update assisted living to a multifamily home into our master plan.
It's a recommendation to council, it's not a approval of the plan, just to clarify.
Correct.
Might want to restate it just for official.
Well, we had two of them, just, you separating them?
Are we separating them?
Connie one about the annual.
No, they can both, they can both go together, just, just say, make a recommendation to.
So I'm making a recommendation to update the master plan to adding a meeting from the committees annually per year or well, and then update the assisted living to a multifamily facility.
Uh-huh.
So.
And then.
And then, and then to present to, and then approve it to present to council.
Oh, present to council. Based on those changes presented.
No, pending those changes, we're sending it. We want to make sure that we are still sending it.
Okay. Wait a second.
This part's always tricky.
So you want me to make a motion based on the recommendation or updating the plan, the master plan, with adding for the committee to meet annually and update the assisted living to a multifamily facility to the master plan two. All my words just left. You do it.
It's complicated, so, okay. All right, I'll make a motion that we send the master plan to the city council. Provided changes are made and given to us by June tenth in order, so that they get an opportunity to see that. We can, and we will alert them. So based on those two changes, making in a, in a request that the all committees in the city meet on an annual basis. And then the assisted living come under the multifamily area, residential area.
I believe that sounded correct to me. All right. Do, is there a second?
Support.
All right, roll call. Foster?
Yes.
Needham Meyer?
Yes.
Niner? Yes. Bosler.
Yeah.
All right, motion carried.
Can I just interject it one second and just say that I greatly appreciate the information the mayor has given us and what Connie put out for us, because that was a good catch and a good thought.
Wanted to clarify a procedural thing, because Hunter will still be out. So if I send this to Kelly, she'll distribute it to the planning commission, is that the process, or how would you like?
It needs to go to city council after.
Sure. Sure, but how would you like the, how would you like the edits, to see the edits?
Oh, yeah, yeah, if you don't mind distributing it to us so we can see the edits as well.
So I'll, I'll send you an email by the end of the week.
I just need it once, please.
But then it would have to be by the eighth or so, because it's gonna get to city council by the tenth.
Sure, sure, I'll, we'll have it by the end of the week, no worries. I appreciate everyone's time and their focus on implementation, because a lot of times these plans sit on shelves, so it's really, you know, good to see that focus.
Thank you.
Thank you.
All righty. I believe that was the last item on the agenda, aside from correspondence received and sent. I pulled that one up already from Councilman Wakeman. Did anyone have any other correspondence received or sent to mention?
I didn't.
Okay. Um, Commissioner input, start with Bosler.
I have nothing.
Okay, Foster?
I think we've pretty much covered everything. I was gonna bring up with Connie and the mayor has said, so I'm done.
Okay. Ready?
I know, I'm outside.
Okay, and I don't have anything else to say, I'm sure you're all done hearing me talk. Okay, general information, there is none. Future meeting dates, Parks and Rec, June tenth at seven P M at the library. The Flood Erosion Protection Council, June seventeenth at seven o'clock P M at, here at Water Tower Park. D D A, May twenty-eighth at, oh, wait.
No, June twenty-fourth.
June twenty-fourth is.
D D A is June twenty-fourth?
They, yeah, they changed their last meeting to, so it went, collapsed for this one. June twenty-fourth at the lighthouse, planning commission, June twenty-fourth at four P M. Oh, we need to, yeah, that is our agenda item that we have missed. Let me skip that one, we will circle back to that one. Council, the next council meeting is June twelfth at seven P M at Water Tower Park. Circling back to the planning commission meetings, I believe that we are discussing a change in date. Or not change in date, change in time.
Not date, yeah.
Yes. To make it more accommodating for the public and also us.
Yeah, hopefully we can get some more people interested in being on panel here.
Yes, because we have two open spots, tell your friends.
But that four o'clock is a deterrent.
Four o'clock is really hard to make.
So we're going to change the, so, so the motion?
You want a motion for that, Hunter, or do we just?
We will, I think we have, do we need a motion to change our time? Or do we just decide?
Change your bylaws.
You should.
Okay.
Yeah, you should, you know, do a motion, because he voted his first of the year, except the time. So you.
Okay.
Or council did.
Someone voted it.
I'd like to make a motion to change the time for planning commission, still the same date of the Tuesday, just change it to six P M.
Second. Support, whatever.
Yeah, no, either way, I was just gonna say, is this a, I, I think we might need to mention the motion that this is a permanent change.
Want me to redo the motion?
Probably.
All right. Make a motion for a permanent change for the planning committee, still on the same Tuesday, but change the time from four P M to six P M.
Still so far.
All right, roll call. Foster?
Yes.
Needham Meyer?
Yes.
Niner? Yes. Bosler.
Yes.
All right, motion carries. Meetings will now, for the planning commission, our next meeting will be June twenty-fourth, twenty twenty-five at six P M here at Water Tower Park. And with that, I will need a.
Make a motion to close the hearing, no, close the meeting?
Yep.
Support.
All right, all in favor? Bye. All right.